Good evening, we're going to start the Planning Commission meeting. Before we get to calling the roll, I wanted to mention that Commissioner Phil Green resigned this week, so we will have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. And with that, can we have the roll, please?
Yes. Pfeffer?
Here.
Frigoso?
Here.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Chair Swift?
Here. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes on the agenda? Can we have a motion then to approve? Whoops, I didn't look up there. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda then?
A motion to approve the agenda, as is.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 We can't hear you, Linda.
Not on, okay, Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye, thank you. So I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. So now we go on to public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, must do so by email, in person, or via Zoom in the manner described earlier, which I didn't describe, but. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. Conduct: All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described above, state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at lneil@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. And do we have any public comments? And Tamela, do you want to address our Zoom folks?
Certainly, Chair. If you are joining us via Zoom today and you wish to make a comment, you can use the raise hand function found in the center of your dialogue box there, raise hand. And if you're joining us by phone, you can use star nine. Star nine will raise the hand on the phone so I can see it, and star six will unmute you. If you do have a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand now. Chair Swift, I see none.
And any public comments from the audience? None, so we'll go with that to the consent calendar. And can we have that item, please?
The item was pulled from the consent.
Yeah, we're recommending that, let me get to my agenda. Sorry. We're recommending that 129 Lansdale Avenue be continued because there was crucial information missing from the notice, and so we need to renotice it before we hold the public hearing on it.
From the commission, do we have any questions on that or comments? Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comments on our consent calendar. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar from the folks that are here or on Zoom?
I see no raised hands on Zoom.
So I will close, close public comments on the consent calendar, and do we need a motion on that or roll call or anything?
Yes, I think you do. And I would say also, in this case, and I'd like to check in with Linda on this, are we recommending continuance to a date certain?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent, I am.
I'll second.
Aye.
Pfeffer? Frigoso? Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye.
So with that, we'll go on to our public hearing items, which the first public hearing item is 197 Bothen Road. Application?
I just to recuse myself from this item.
Again, through the chair, if I could, if the commissioner could indicate why.
I have a professional conflict of interest with the architect firm. Thank you.
Okay, with that, can we have the staff report, please?
So, um, the project, the project proposes to remodel over 50% of the existing 1,425 square foot two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom single-family residence. It would also add approximately 483 square feet to the back of the structure, resulting in a new total living space of approximately 1,908 square feet. It also proposes a new approximately 300 square foot 13-foot-tall detached garage to replace the existing attached garage, and that is proposed to be converted into a JADU. So site work involves modifying and reconstructing two decks located behind the house and removing brick stairs connecting the decks and replacing the stairs with a new wooden stairway. Two new decks are proposed, one at the back of the house and one at the front adjacent to the JADU. A new stairway would connect the new deck at the back of the house to one of the reconstructed decks. The existing concrete driveway would be removed and replaced with brick pavers, and a few new native shrubs, perennials, and ground covers would be planted. So the project site is approximately 10,700 square feet. It is irregularly shaped with a relatively narrow panhandle that extends from a back corner of the property to Iron Springs Road. So the existing property meets the FAR lot coverage height, individual front and rear setbacks, combined front and rear setbacks, and one of the individual side setbacks on the western side of the property. However, one of the decks located at the back of the house that was present when the current owners purchased the property is approximately one foot from the eastern property boundary, and therefore does not meet the minimum five-foot individual side setback requirement. This deck also causes the property to maintain a combined side setback of approximately six-and-a-half feet or six feet seven inches, which does not meet the 20-foot requirement. The project site does not meet the minimum size requirements of the RS6 zone based on its slope, requiring approval of either a Hillary residential development permit or a conditional use permit. Because the project would result in minimal site disturbance and requires approximately only 37 cubic yards of excavation that would occur within the existing development footprint, staff determined that the HRD permit is not applicable, and approval of a CUP would be required. A design review permit is required because of the 50% remodel, and a variance to the combined side yard setback is required for the property to maintain a combined side yard setback of approximately nine-and-a-half feet. So regarding the conditional use permit, the project would maintain a similar size, floor area ratio, and setbacks as other properties in the immediate neighborhood. It would comply with the regulations of the RS6 zone with the exception of maintaining an approximately nine-and-a-half-foot combined side yard setback. The existing deck behind the house that is approximately one foot from the eastern property boundary would be reconstructed in roughly the same location, but with a new setback of approximately four feet from the western property, or sorry, eastern property boundary. This encroachment into the required five-foot individual side yard setback is allowed by town code. However, this reconstructed deck would result in the property maintaining a combined side yard setback of approximately nine-and-a-half feet, which would be an improvement over the existing combined side setback of approximately six-and-a-half feet. In addition, the project would provide the required onsite parking and install sprinklers and a new type-A fire-rated roof. Therefore, the project would not create a public nuisance or cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties or premises, and the project would result in a better development of the site than would otherwise be the case. So as discussed previously, the project seeks a variance to maintain a combined side setback of approximately nine-and-a-half feet. The structures that would encroach into the combined setback would be a portion of a new deck, a portion of a reconstructed deck, and a new stairway that connects the two decks. While this would increase the number of structures within the combined side yard setback, this seems a reasonable request due to the narrowness of the height and the slope. It's approximately a 30% slope average. Additionally, the new deck and stairway would meet the minimum five-foot side yard setback requirement and would not encroach into the combined side yard setback any further than the existing house. As mentioned earlier, reconstructing a deck further away from the property boundary would be an improvement over the existing condition. The portion of the new deck, the new stairway, and the portion of the reconstructed deck within the combined side yard setback would not impact the privacy of the next-door neighbor at 195 Bothen Road over the existing conditions. This is because the deck to be reconstructed is already existing and is not proposed to increase in height and would in fact be moved further back from the neighbor than it currently is. The new deck would be no more than three feet off the ground, and the steps connecting it to the reconstructed deck would follow the existing grade for the, right now. So let's see. Due to the wooden fence between the properties intervening vegetation and the slope views between 197 and 195 Bothen would not increase over what is existing, and the current level of privacy would be maintained. The project would maintain similar setbacks from property lines as other developed properties in the vicinity and would not be a grant of special privilege because the improvements would be located behind the existing house or the addition would be in the new, one of the new decks. Those, they would not have a detrimental impact on the public, and the garage would be pretty far setback from the street. It wouldn't have an impact on the public either. The location of the addition at the back of the house is not going to substantially change the appearance of the house. All proposed materials would match what's existing, which is shingles stained brown stain with tan trim. The addition would be visible to the neighbor at 195 Bothen Road and potentially to people passing by on iron springs behind the house, but because of the earth tone colors, the slope, and existing trees and other vegetation, that would ensure that the project kind of blends into its surroundings, minimizing visual impacts. So the matching materials, colors, and gable roof line would bring the proposed detached garage into design harmony with the house. New native landscaping would complement existing vegetation. All proposed exterior light fixtures would be dark sky friendly, and existing natural site features would be preserved, including the site grade, slope, existing trees, and the Bothen Creek drainage channel, which goes under a portion of the front of the property. So the proposed changes will not substantially change the architectural style of the structure, and the resulting house and garage will comply with the design review criteria set forth in the town code. In addition, minimal site disturbance is proposed, and consequently, the site would not look much different after project implementation. It is, the property is within a quarter mile of a known northern spotted owl nesting site, so the resolution includes mitigation to minimize any potential impacts on northern spotted owls as that might occur as a result of project implementation. So in no agencies or Town of Fairfax departments had any comments or project-specific conditions of approval. So the standard conditions of approval from the fire department, the water district, and the sanitary district have been included in the resolution. So that concludes the staff report. Staff recommends to move to approve application number 2301 by adopting resolution number 2023-01 that sets forth the findings and conditions for the project approval.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised.
Just a quick question, did we receive any correspondence from neighbors on the project?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now I'd like to hear if the applicant or owners have any comments they'd like to make. Then come up to the podium and press the button on the microphone, please. There you go, thanks.
I think that worked. Does that work? All right. At long last, the Planning Commission hearing. We're very glad to be here, and my name is Mike Georges, and this is my wife Shannon Snyder. Linda and Kara, thank you very much for working so well and helping us interpret the codes and working with our architects, Zane and John Clark, John Clark Architects. We feel like it's been a very collaborative, sincere process to get to where we are today. The main reason that we're doing this project is Shannon's mom is of very ill health. She's 80, and she's moved in with us. And over the couple of years that she's been there, the few years that she's been there, it's become apparent that we need to have a little more room for ourselves and for her. And creating the junior IDU will help us create that. Furthermore, having a ground floor level space for her is very important as well as she suffers from COPD, and it's hard to breathe and walk down the stairs. And so that was the impetus for this project. And in the process, there's obviously things that we can see can be used as improvement for the house in general. A new kitchen, a larger living room for gatherings for our family and friends and our children's friends. And so that's really the main reason that we're doing this, and we're very happy that we have gotten this far and we're very happy that it's approvable and that we hope that we will approve it. And so thank you very much.
Thank you. Did any of the commissioners have any questions for the owners?
I do.
Commissioner Jansen?
I do. I have one question for you. So that is the east side in the back, where the existing wood deck is replaced by a new wood deck. But on the east side, there is a small piece of the deck that goes farther east, but it's cut off by the new extension of the building. So it's no longer connected to the main part. Is that, does that need to change in some form? Or I'm not understanding it what I'm looking at.
Can I ask Zane to answer that question?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'm just puzzled. I just tried to understand it. I don't see it has any implication, but I don't understand it.
Yeah, hello, my name is Zane Ellis-Rector. Can you hear me? Is that good? All right, perfect. Yeah, that is existing retaining wall. So we figured since it's already retaining earth, we might as well leave it, just because it's doing its job currently.
And leaves the deck on it.
Exactly.
As a, okay, all right. It has no function.
But it's retaining earth, that's it, yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Cindy. I just have a couple of quick questions for you. First of all, I think it's a really nice design. I think what you're doing is great, and it should be a great improvement to your property and the neighborhood. My question, though, is about the creek. There's a point, I was at the northwest corner of the property, looking into the southern end of it, because the gate was closed, but I had a good sight. And I noticed the creek is really close to, there's decking, and I guess your garage there. There seems to be decking in the ground, some foundations that are not on these plans. I guess my question for you is, how much water did you get? How high did that creek get? Because I see it actually travels right across your driveway.
Yes, it does, and we've had a, two years in a row, we've had a really good test of the creek.
That's why I'm not asking.
Last year, the creek on our property enters a three-foot diameter culvert. And when, last year, in that large rain event in October, November, that there was a lot of flooding in various areas of the town and the county, there was some debris, I think amongst others, large roots and a ladder that had gotten stuck in the culvert. And that caused the rest of the debris in that deluge that went most of the day to back up and essentially block the culvert. The water is backed up completely. What you may see is on the northern side of the property, it's a little lower, little lower than the southern side of the property there, where the garage will be. And so what happened is the water actually did fill up completely and then went over the banks and washed down the, you know, the edge of our, the northern edge of our property into the street and then down the street. So it didn't have any effect.
It didn't get to your garage?
It did not get to the proposed location of the garage at all. We've had Frank Rolovero Ridley, a geotech engineer, had, we dug some test pits early on in the process or during the process, I shouldn't have that early on, but during the process, and they found it suitable to put the garage there.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I also live on a creek, so I know the dangers of it, but I didn't see anything about that analysis in the staff report or in the packet. And I just was wondering if we wanted to incorporate that, or it's...
Can I, I have a question for you. So there are a number of sort of drainages that kind of go, that kind of come down into the site from up, from Iron Springs. I think maybe there's like two?
There's two.
Two? And then there's the creek that actually goes through the front of the property. So were you talking about the drainages that go from Iron Springs down?
I'm talking about the creek and the water that runs across the property, across the driveway, in front of the garage, and into the creek on the east side, or west side, sorry. East is to the right, west side, where the creek is labeled, and you can see it very clearly in this round area at the corner of the proposed garage. And it seemed like the edge of that creek was a little unstable and really close to...
Can I add?
Yes, please.
So this here in the series of the last, the storms of the last month, where there is nothing obstructing it, you might have noticed that it wasn't actually us, but somebody, one of our neighbors had put it, you know, that upside-down police barricade in there that's keeping all the debris out of the culvert now, as a temporary measure. That, the creek has functioned superbly all winter long, this winter. So that was this, like, with that measure in place, there's no more debris. We clear it out after every storm, and the water flows quite smoothly through there now. And no overflowing all this winter.
I didn't notice the culvert. Is it over on the side I just was referring to?
Northwest corner.
Okay, yes, there was trucks and materials, hard to get a look, but the peak seemed like it was, like the edge of the creek was unstable, is how it seemed to me.
I think with the flow of the creek that we've seen in this last January, this month with all the storms that we've had, the creek has flowed smoothly. I mean, there's been no more coming over the banks. It's been, it's withheld. The culvert has functioned as it should. And it starts in the northwest corner or another property, about 20 feet in, something like that, and it travels across the property.
Norma, if you look at page A1, A0.1, the top drawing, it clearly, it dots in where the culvert is. It's real clear to see the location on that, on that one. See it? Yeah, yeah.
I think I had missed that page. And then my other question for you is, where does the trailer go? Where does that airstream or that cool trailer go when you're done with the construction?
We're not sure, actually. We haven't figured that out. One area would be to keep it towards the front of the prop, the north side of the property, underneath the redwood tree.
Okay. Okay, that's it for now, except that I also really like to have a fire-rated roof where you are.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's important to us as well.
Thank you.
Um, through the chair. So I just wanted to let, point out, so they did submit a conceptual grading and drainage plan. And so that was submitted with the documents that you received. And that's going to be, so once they apply for building permits, all the grading and drainage would be reviewed and approved by our outside consulting engineer.
Okay, that's great, because I also noticed in the staff report that it does not really address, unless I missed it in the resolution, but we can talk about the resolution afterwards.
Okay.
Any questions from Commissioners Kelly and Newton for the owners or architect?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up now to public comment on this item. Does anyone in the audience have public comments?
And I'll take the moment to remind our online audience to please use the raise hand function in the center of your dialogue box. Raise hand if you have a comment on this item, and I see no raised hands from the audience. Chair Swift?
Thank you. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Just a general comment, I think, yeah, the design is, it's very smart how it's set up. And I think all the addition to the building by itself really does not encroach on a 20-foot combined setback. All the new parts are significantly further setback. So I think just the L shape of the existing building, just like the other existing building on the east side, those were built in the past, and those are the ones that have that encroachment. So I would support this project.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd probably concur with Commissioner Jensen. I think the project is quite handsome with regard to the design review. I think that it's well proportioned, it uses its materials well, make it fit within the landscape well. As some of you might know, I'm quite fond of our combined side yard setback requirement. But I think that this, this project, because of its odd shape... combined side yard setback requirement, but I think that this, this project, because of its odd shape in the site and the where it sits in the landscape, I, I don't see any reason to harp on that issue with this project. I think it's kind to its neighbors and it, and it sits within the site well. And with regard to the conditional use permit, I think that it, it's, it still remains to be a good neighbor, although it's, it's adding quite a bit of area. They did it well. They put the area in the right place on the site. It has very little impact on the neighborhood and I think it's well done. So I'm in, I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also in support of the project. I noted some very minor typos in the resolution, page two, paragraph one, under the conditional use permit. The sentence that talks about, there's just a missing the while the proposed project would result in. Those two words were missing, the and in. And other than that, you know, this is one of my favorite neighborhoods in Fairfax. I love this street. I am so happy for you guys to get to bring another generation on board there because it's such a sweet spot. So I, I really support this as well.
I would also agree with my planning commissioners. I love the design of this improvement and the development that includes an ADU affordable housing. If only we could get a couple hundred people to do something like that with their properties, we'd have a lot of our housing issues taken care of in a really neighborhood cottage type of feel and situation. So I'm very delighted to see that and I would hope that other people can follow your example. And I see now that I have more carefully read. It is page three of the reso section five about the foundation elements designed by a structural engineer certified and the calculations and elements stamped and signed by our engineer and submitted to his satisfaction. So I'm, I'm fine with that and very happy to approve this project.
I'm in support of it as well. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-01. Application, oh, that is application number 2301 for the conditional use permit combined set yard setback variance and a design review permit for a 50% remodel and 483 square foot expansion of the existing single family residence. The construction of a new D test 302 square foot garage and site improvement at 197 Bothin Road with the only addition to make an adjustment in paragraph one on page two per Commissioner Newton's comments.
I will second that motion with the slight, slight.
Okay, shall I call the roll? Okay. Bragozzo?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. So it's a unanimous with one recusal on that. So thank you. Lovely project. And there is a appeal, a 10 business day window for filing of appeals. Anyone interested in doing that for this project can contact the planning department at Town Hall for further information and the filing fee. Thank you.
And just wanted to state for the record, Commissioner Pfeffer is back. And if we could have the staff report on item 367 Tamil Pious Road.
Yes, this project includes, this project was continued from the December 15th meeting. There were a number of reasons for that, including incomplete noticing, difficulties posting the project plans to the website, the necessity of the project having a public hearing on the requested driveway width variance that was transitioning from being under the purview of the town council to being under the planning commission's purview. There was one tree that wasn't included in the tree removal recommendation that had gone to the tree committee. You know, when, when the first design was submitted, they've done a number of redesigns, right? And the back patio got redesigned. So it was continued from December. The project includes construction of a 28-foot, six-inch tall, three-story structure with a 315-square-foot one-car garage and 497-square-foot studio accessory dwelling unit on the first floor. And the design includes a 60-square-foot deck at the front of the structure off the master bedroom on the second floor, a 150-square-foot deck at the front of the dining room on the third floor, and an excavated three-level patio area that wraps around the east and south sides of the structure, providing 554 square feet of outdoor living space that can be accessed from the great room. Two, nine by night by 22-foot parallel parking spaces are being provided in an expanded driveway area along the front of the site with the structure retaining walls designed to accommodate a storage area for waste bins, garbage recycling and a green can. As I said before, it was continued from the December 15th meeting. The commission asked them to address certain items. One of them was the the tree that still needed a recommendation and the tree committee reviewed the project at their January 23rd meeting and recommended that the council approve along with all the other trees that they're requesting a permit for, the one that's in the middle of the proposed patio area at the rear of the structure. The applicants also submitted the required side yard setback variance application that they needed to submit. The commission had asked for some of the drawings to be revised. They asked that the perspective rendering drawings in the response to design review criteria submittal that was attachment D to the staff report in December and plan page A5 to be revised to accurately reflect the proposed structure massing in relationship to the surrounding topography and to revise the perspective on page A7 of the plans to include the structure at 73 Tamil Pious Road accurately depicting the relationship to both the two-story garage ADU structure and the main residence. The applicants have revised plan page seven to accurately reflect the structure massing in relationship to 73 Tamil Pious Road, both structures on that site. But they eliminated page five from the plan set and they're going to have to explain the difficulties they had, why they didn't try to fix that drawing. The proposed structure complies with the setback height, lot coverage and floor area ratio requirements of the RS6 residential single-family zone. The site is constrained by its slope, its narrow width, and the fact that a past owner allowed two parking decks to be built at the top of the site to serve the residences at 118 and 120 Tamil Pious Road, and they were built with basically one-to-zero-foot setbacks. So the property before the house even goes in has a zero rear yard setback, right? The house at seven, the house and the ADU at 73 Tamil Pious Road were built right up to the side property line. So all of these things make it difficult to locate a house. The, so pushing the house to be built off that lower portion of Tamil Pious Road requires the excavation of, let's see, 867 cubic yards of material and that's necessary to build the required three parking spaces and the residents in compliance with the parking regulations and the height limitations set forth in the RS6 zone regulations. The house has not been centered on the site, but has been located with a minimum five-foot side yard setback maintained from the two residential structures at 73 Tamil Pious Road that were built in 1916 right up to the side property line. The project will require the approval, will require the approval of a number of discretionary permits, including a hill area residential development permit, a design review permit, a combined front and rear setback variance, an excavation permit, an encroachment permit, a tree removal permit, a retaining wall height variance and a combined side yard setback variance and a driveway width variance. I'm not going to go over the discretionary permits that were reported on and discussed at the December 15th meeting, but I am going to discuss the two variances that weren't noticed and weren't discussed thoroughly at that meeting. And that's the combined side yard setback variance and the driveway width variance. The town code prohibits locating required parking spaces in any required side yard and it also limits residential driveway width to no more than 20 feet. The code also gives authority to the planning commission to grant exceptions to both these regulations if something inherent in a property makes compliance with the regulations difficult or inequitable to other development in the surrounding neighborhood. And if the exceptions will not create hazards for neighboring properties or the general public. The same site conditions that result in the other requested discretionary permits being necessary drive the need for the combined side yard setback, the combined side yard setback variance and the driveway width variance because the house has to be pushed away from the parking decks that are already there. It's pushed to the front of the site and the parking spaces had to be oriented parallel to the road in a widened driveway area. And they're also, they also encroach into the combined 20-foot side yard setback, although they do maintain the minimum side yard setbacks. So we're recommending that the commission approve the project by adopting resolution number 2022-27 with the addition and correction of the following conditions. Condition 60 is supposed to end after the discussion of the drainage system maintenance agreement and the dark sky compliance condition is supposed to be condition 61 with condition 61 becoming condition 62. And we want to correct the wording in condition 62, which, which used to be 61 to eliminate the first sentence. So the condition will read, "Construction shall be prohibited during the northern spotted owl nesting season from February 1st through July 31st, et cetera, et cetera." We would also like to add condition 63 as follows. "The revocable encroachment document memorializing the approved revocable encroachments must be signed, notarized and recorded at the Marin County Recorder's Office prior to issuance of the building permit." And then a couple corrections to the staff report in the title page. The parcel number wasn't printed correctly. It should be 001-123-03. And the encroachment permit wasn't listed in the action section, so that should be added. And then on page eight, second paragraph, the neighbor's address is listed as 74. I thought I had caught all those and changed them to 66. It's in there twice as 74, so it should be 73 Tamil Pious Road. And that would conclude our report, except to advise the public and you that you did receive a letter from, from the neighbor at 73 Tamil Pious Road. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff? Commissioner Jensen?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple. Let me start with a simple one first. So the, the combined site setback variance would be only because the surface parking area is closer, right? Because the building, the structure itself does comply.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. In that same matrix, the combined front rear setback for this project is listed as 11 foot, 10 in the front, one in the back. And then it gets complicated because if I look at the drawings, the, the setback, the, the, basically the outline of the setback is drawn side to side five and 15 front to back as 10 and 29 or six as 29, which is 35. So where, how do I interpret the 10 and one? The 10 is consistent with the plan, but the one in the back is measured from where the.
Yeah, let me find the page. Let me find the page.
I'm looking at A1 dot zero. That has most of the dimensions in there. So it has from the rear of the property to the dashed in setback line, 29 foot. And then from the front, well, the front is not clear, but oh, there it is. The front is six. So that's your, that's the footprint of the 35, six and 29. So within that box, you comply with your setback requirements.
Not sure I'm understanding, but when you do the front and rear combined setback, you have to take the setback from the, the structure that's the closest to the rear property line. That's the rear setback?
Okay, that's where it gets complicated.
Yeah, so the parking, these covered parking decks, right? It was, the way the plans were drawn, it was a little bit difficult for, for me, because the cover doesn't really start. The cover wasn't really drawn in on the plans, but I mean, you could see that the approach to the parking decks, right? I, I think the covered parking deck is like one, the cover is one foot. So the, the parking deck itself can be located in the, in the required setback. It's the cover. That's, that's not supposed, covered parking is not required on a downslope.
So, so here, here does, here, here gets the complicated questions. I would assume that your setback is from the property line, not from another building on the same property.
That's correct, but you add the rear setback to the front setback to get the combined.
Right. 29 plus six.
Where are you, so where are you seeing 29?
29 is on sheet A100 from the rear from the, so that is where it's by North Arrow. If, well, if north is up from the southern property line to the dashed box, which.
That's, so they're drawing in what it should be.
Correct.
Right.
Right. Yeah, the existing decks are, are grandfathered in. I mean, they don't comply, but that's not, they're existing, they're there. So the, if you draw the box of your allowed property setbacks, that's the dashed box that's on that drawing. Correct. Five, 15, six and 29.
Correct.
So where does the one foot come in?
When you, when you're, when you're measuring the combined setback, you can't disregard existing structures. Like if someone had an accessory structure in the rear, you have to add that setback to the front setback and that's the combined setback that's being proposed, right?
I now see the one foot is from the, from the existing deck to that.
Right. And there, and there's no way that, well, there's no way they could push, push the house back into the hillside, right? It would be so close to those parking decks that they couldn't get the combined.
Understood, understood. Yeah. So now, now I understand.
It's messy, trust me.
So then, so that gets me then in the real difficult question. The FAR calculation is based on the entire size of the property. So that takes in account the, that takes in account all the parking exclusive to 500 feet that you're allowed.
Let me address that.
Okay.
Staff did not choose to count those parking decks towards this FAR because it, it it's not, it's not a structure that's providing parking for this property. It was almost like it was done as a goodwill thing to, to create parking for two houses across the street that have no parking. Right? So it wasn't being built for this house and, and you can, you know, maybe that was not the right way to approach it. But we didn't feel that this development should be penalized by a past decision that was benefiting the neighbors. Right? So if the commission, if the commission feels very strongly that it should have been counted, we would still recommend approval of an exception to the, you know, the FAR and the lot coverage because the structures do not provide a benefit to this, to this property. It was done by the neighbor a long time ago for two houses that are on an up. By the neighbor a long time ago for two houses that are on an up slope, very steep up slopes. Would have been very difficult for them to build head in parking.
It was done by a prior owner, correct?
It was done by, it was, it was, it was done. It, the easements were granted by a previous owner to the neighbors across the street.
Yeah, but so we do not know if it did or did not have benefits for the previous owner. I mean, that's an unknown.
Uh, it's, the, based on the easements, the easements were created so that the neighbors across the street could put parking in. So I, I don't see that that, I mean, I don't know, they may have paid him, paid the person, right? But. It's a very unusual situation. Not that. We have other properties that have a similar situation.
I understand the reasoning. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Under design review in the resolution on page three. There's a reference to plans submitted July. One, twenty-twenty-one. And I don't. I don't know if that's correct.
Hang on, let me get to that page. And which, at which paragraph are you looking at?
Paragraph one under design review.
And you're in the resolution.
Resolution, page three.
The project depicted in the plan submitted to the town, but yeah, you're correct. It should be updated to this submittal. We went through three revisions, so. Now I'm forgetting what the most recent one is. We've done so many, September something, isn't it? September. I have my old set that doesn't say, um. What do you, can you guys tell me what the date stamped on the front of your plans is? No, for the, um, for the full set, yeah.
August eleventh.
August eleventh is what it should say. Thank you.
And then on the next paragraph, the combined side yard variance. Uh, should probably.
Yeah, thank you. Got it.
And, and right under that on the paragraph one. This, in the middle of paragraph one, it says the strict enforcement of the required setback backs.
Yep.
Page eight of the staff report. Indicates that there are some notations. On pages A three point O and A three two. That are mislabeled and should be switched between elevation numbers three and four. This is page eight of the staff report. Um, but page four of the reso. Uh, the last paragraph refers to the plans and reports, and I'm just wondering if this correction. Needs to be noted, noticed in that. Reference to the plans and reports or not.
So what I was referring to, and Ron, can I, I want to show, I want to show this to you. Just to make sure I'm not wrong. I just think these are, this is the side that's, this is the northeast side, correct, facing seventy-three Tamil Pious. Yeah, so all I'm saying is that on page three. The elevations are mislabeled and we, and I, and they should be corrected when the building permit submitted. Does that help with, I'm. No, no, yeah, but I would, I'm trying to figure out what. So if they correct. So Mimi, are you, are you wondering if something in the resolution because of that error needs to be changed?
Yes. Because we basically said in accordance with the plans and reports submitted on X date. And if you're going to change those plans and reports, you need to get the planning director's approval, but if all we're talking about is correction. Of those mislabeled elevation numbers. Then it seems to me we can just say, except for the mislabeling of the elevation numbers in the reso.
Got it.
And it don't have any inconsistencies.
Okay, so with the corrections.
So I was looking at page four of the reso, the last paragraph.
So we could just say with the corrections made to page A three point zero correctly labeling.
Elevations between three and four. As well as A thirty-three two, I think you said in the staff report.
What did I say?
Page A three point zero and A three two.
Yeah. So noted.
Okay, then I go on to. Page six of the reso. And there, there's a uh reference to, in paragraph fourteen to the tree committee, but. We received a tree committee. Permit from January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And so we need to revise paragraph fourteen.
Or just, or just eliminate it. Cause now you've.
You should refer to the January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. Tree committee document. Or meeting, which you can just do there. The tree committee met on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three and approved the removal of that oak tree.
Well, I could see if you put that in the findings, but I don't know if we should list it as in the conditions, right? Because.
I just. Do whatever you want with that then. I don't have a. I don't have a preference. I just don't like it the way it is.
Would you guys be okay if I just eliminated it? Because that was a, that was something they were supposed to do before this hearing, and you're going to be taking. Action on the tree committee. So it seems like that condition's unnecessary now that they were able to get a recommendation on it. Is everyone okay with that? And we'll renumber everything? So that condition was, that condition was written before we realized that there was a tree that had not been covered by the. Tree recommendation they got last year. Now they have all their trees covered.
But I think, I, I guess the comment there is if we're identifying, so if you're saying you're deleting fourteen and fifteen. Because fifteen addresses. The first tree permit with a date. So if we're going to put a date in there. Then we should address. The second tree permit or delete the dates.
Well, I think I, I think what we should do is eliminate fourteen, and if you guys grant the tree permit. Tonight, then we just say the tree, the tree, the approved tree permits must be retained on site and not even do a date, right? The tree permit shall be retained, shall be whatever it says, kept on the job site while the trees are being removed. Keep it simple.
Well, that's a really good thing, question there, Cindy, because the paragraph fifteen refers to. The December planning commission meeting at which we did not approve the tree permit.
That's right. You didn't take action. So this one got messy because while writing the staff report, we realized a couple of things that we didn't, weren't aware of. That one, that one of the trees had not been included in the tree permit that we, the tree recommendation we obtained. And we also, when we were reviewing the plans and writing the report, we realized that. The parallel parking space is encroached into the required combined side yard setback, which the code, you know, usually we're looking for structures in the setbacks, right? And I just missed the fact that the uncovered parking was going to be in the side yard setback, so. That's why this is a little bit messy, but I think if we just remove the date and say that the tree, the approved tree permits have to be on site.
And that could even be included in thirteen, and you can delete fourteen and fifteen.
So.
Yeah, we can do that. Yes, we can, we can make fifteen part of thirteen and just delete. Fourteen and fifteen. It'll be clearer that way. Is everyone okay with that?
Sounds good to me, assuming we get to approval of a reso.
Right.
Um. On page ten of the reso. There is a paragraph thirty-nine. That uh. Tells the applicant they have to complete the foundation. Within a hundred and twenty days of the application. So I know this has gone through a bunch of different applications. Uh, or, or updates to the application. Um, but I'm also wondering if that. Requirement takes into account. The prohibition on excavation between October one and April one.
That is, that is a standard MMWD condition, and I don't, I don't think they care.
As well as the prohibition on construction between. February one and July thirty-one, which is a spotted owl requirement. So, you know, like which would. I, I'm just, okay.
It makes it, it makes it, it makes it difficult for construction. You have to really time it, but that's an MMWD condition. And they've had it for years, so.
WD application?
I'm sorry, a Marin Municipal Water District requirement is that you have, once you get your building permit, you have to finish the foundation within a hundred and twenty days. That's not coming from the town. And I don't know, since I've never built a house or anything, you might ask the architect if he's had to deal with that before because other communities must have. You know, anyone in MMWD's district, that's a standard condition.
Well, so here's my concern, Linda. So the date of the application is not the application to Fairfax. Right? It's the application to MMWD, right?
Correct, correct.
So I, I would like to clarify that, but I also question. How MMWD's standard template language can undercut. Protections of spotted owls who, as far as I'm concerned. The Endangered Species Act takes precedence over MMWD. So just curious about that. Maybe uh, our planning director knows better. I don't know.
Well, I don't.
Really odd to me.
If I could interject, perhaps what could happen after this application is a, is a. Call could be put into MMWD to ask them that question, to see how they address that. Just for our information.
Yeah, through the chair, I think in a case like this, if we have competing. Uh, conditions, uh, we would definitely, the staff, the Fairfax staff would definitely contact. The, the agency that put the condition forward. And, and look for a modification, whether it's spotted owl or. A period where construction can occur during a rainy period. So. In terms of our building official, in terms of monitoring, conditions of approval, our building and planning staff, if there is a conflict. We would work it out with the agency. And that's standard, that, that's.
Thank.
Any other comments, Commissioner Newton?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Oh, um. Really, I guess I just have one, and it might be just a point of order question. I was wondering whether the letters that we receive on um. Projects, are tho, those uh open to the public? Are they a matter of public record?
They are, and there's, it's, it's been placed, so we got it late, you know, after the preparation of the normal packet, so. A copy goes into a special packet that's sitting out on the. Safe out there, but if it's, if it, if we get it too late, we're unable to get it posted to the website.
Then I just wanted to point out that I think we received a few letters last month as well. I wanted to make sure those are part of the record.
Those got into the record. Those were, those were attachments, I thought, to the December meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question um on the clarification on the reso. The one that dealt with the encroachment. Permit.
The added condition that I added?
Yes.
Okay.
Did that also include in that language that a copy of the recorded?
Yeah, I thought it did.
Okay. Must be provided to the town.
No, you're right, it didn't.
Okay.
So let me. So condition sixty-three should read, the revocable encroachment document memorializing the approved revocable encroachment. Must be signed, notarized and recorded at the Marin County Recorder's Office prior to issuance of the building permit. And a copy of the recorded document should be provided to the building department.
Prior to issuance of the building permit, right?
Prior to issuance of the building.
Thank you. Think that's the only. Commissioner Jensen?
I have one more. I saw in my notes. So on the. Combined side setback. We only have the uh vehicle parking in front. However. There is on the, so that is the east side, there is a. A deck or retaining wall, there is a structure that passes beyond the fifteen foot. Does that need a variance as well?
The retaining wall that's, that's creating the dri, the dri, edge of the driveway?
No more to the back of the house, part of the, well, there's, that's going to be a question for the applicants. Well, it's either slab on grade or it's a deck. And it has a. Wall around it of an height that's, I don't, not know.
So retaining walls. So there, there is.
Well, it says a couple of things on the drawings.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is, but it is something.
So walls and fences, um. Walls and fences can be located in setbacks, but that one wall for the patio has to get a height variance because. So a six-foot wall can be located anywhere behind the front property line, right? And so when it's going up to eleven feet. It needs a variance for that. And it's always a little bit of a judgment call, you know, if a wall is part of the house, like creating the parking, right? We can consider it part of the structure, but this wall I considered just a wall because it's creating the patio area. You know what I mean? So I didn't say that it needed a setback variance, but it needs a retaining wall height variance.
And also it's called out as a deck.
So the deck is, is going to be concrete on grade. It's not a wooden deck unless I'm wrong. And so concrete on de, on grade. Isn't usually considered a structure. At least we don't in Fairfax consider it a structure.
Yeah, it's, it's.
If it was a raised wooden deck, you know, then we would consider it a structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if we would, um, if the owner and applicant would like to make some. Comments. You can come up to the podium, and then if commissioners have questions for you, they can ask them after your comments.
Uh, good evening. Honorable commissioners, Ron Cappy, Cappy Architects, here with owner Stephen Altman. We're available, uh, we're listening, obviously, and we're available to answer questions uh as best we can. Uh, Stephen made a co, his. Comments last meeting, which I think were memorialized, talking about the benefits of rental housing, you know, which we're adding. And I was just answering questions, so we're available, but we.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have questions for the applicant or the owner, Commissioner Jensen?
I'm afraid I have. First of all, I think it, I, it's very nice design. I really like it. It looks very good, has a lot of interesting things to it. It's also taking, um, it uses, it utilizes the maximum area that you can put on that side, and there's nothing wrong with that. That gives a lot of benefit for the owner, so. But it also makes me very careful to look at that I understand it correctly. So the deck that I was just talking about in the rear, it's called out as a deck, it's called out as a slab in grade, and on a different sheet, it's called out, the borderline of it is shown dotted as patio above. So what is it?
It's a concrete patio.
So it's, it's a concrete slab on grade with a retaining wall where needed to keep the hill down.
That's, that's basically it. Yeah, try to create some flat area on a pretty steep side.
Okay, understood. That area, because you have a retaining wall and it's on the same, well, a portion of it is on the same level as the house, needs to be, um, you need to remove soil. However, I didn't see that on the calculation page. It shows the house, so that is sheet, what is it? It's sheet 101. It shows the basically triangular shape you need to dig into the hill to place the house. The, this area for that, for the decks behind it is not included. It's probably no more than 8% of the whole thing, but, um, so that needs to be added to your total technically.
Okay, I think a point well taken. I think we had 867 cubic yards, and we did try to estimate for the footings, and there's also some fluff, so it's an inexact number, but it's really close.
Right. Yeah, it's not going to be a big difference, but there's a detail to that.
Thank you.
Yes, so the height for retaining walls varies, we've just talked about that, so that goes from anywhere between 3 to 12 feet roughly. 11.
This, the one in the back.
In the one in the back, right.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's really just trying to hold back the hill.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Um, I just need clarification on uh something with the design. In the materials we got, we see upper level Kellymore titanium gray, lower level Kellymore brilliant silver. And I think, uh, you know, there's a reference in the staff report to two different shades of gray, which I interpreted as these two on the um board that was provided. But when I look at the rendering on attachment D, it seems like the lower level is really very white, and I'm just wanting to clarify that it's really more gray or silver than this sort of white, which is really jarring to me. Can you provide clarification on that?
Well, uh, we should get the color swatch and take a look at it. But we don't have a problem with light gray. We went with the white because the adjacent buildings are white, white, white. So we thought we'd tie that lower level in with the neighbor.
Okay, so the lower level is currently envisioned as white.
Or light gray, you know, we can't talk about that. The main idea is that we had two tones. We had a lighter color at the bottom, white or light gray, and then a darker gray up above. I don't have the color swatches in front of me.
Thank you. I don't know.
I know what you're saying. It's, it looks pretty white. Correct, yeah. So it looks like about 20% gray. So, okay, so then we're talking about the, the rendering. When we were working on that rendering and realizing how white the building was next door, I think we probably lightened up the rendering. But we're happy to stick with our color palette.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. I have a couple, I guess, very specific questions to start here. How far will your proposed building be from the building next door? If that did, at its narrowest point, at its closest point, how far will it be?
Five feet.
And what about if you measured sort of eve line to eve line laterally? How close are they?
You mean the eaves that encroach onto my client's property?
Sure, whatever the closest eve to the closest eve.
Yeah, there is the ease, you're right, the use actually go over the property line onto Mr. Altman's property. At that point, we're probably, what would you guess? Four feet? Four feet.
Well, that can't be true. If your building has an eve and they have an eve, it's got to be more than one foot.
I guess we were talking about what's adjacent. Our eve is, is quite a bit higher up the hill.
Yeah, I mean laterally, like if you just measure, do they actually overlap?
Well, in other words, you've got the, this little garage, and then we've got five feet, and we have a wall, and then we have a roof that's quite a bit higher than the whole thing. I don't know, I mean, if you're looking straight up to the sky, you'd see an overlap, but I think if you're standing on the ground, you don't see a relationship.
Okay, and I want to make a point of order there. I think it's not just a garage. This is an a carriage house that's an ADU. Somebody's living there, right?
Understood.
I want to make sure that that's clear.
We do understand that.
Yeah, and so that's interesting. So there's actually overlap. Um, okay, let me, I'm sorry, I have to expand my notes here. I'm working on a little screen today. Please excuse me. Um, do, I don't know if you have it, I have a couple of very specific drawing questions. I'm trying to understand the drawings on A 2.0. Um, it shows an outline of something on the property to the east. I was trying to figure out whether that's a building or is that a deck or something? I don't know if we have those drawings that we refer to. Sorry, that was A 2.0.
Okay, I have the drawing.
Okay, so on the, on the property to the east, there's just an outline there, sort of central to the house, to the, you know, to the roof line. Is that, is that a deck or is that a building? We're seeing there kind of the closest thing to the property line.
That's over on the, on the east side?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the adjacencies there.
The one that says number keynote three, it says neighbor. Is that, are you looking at the neighbor?
All right, you got to zoom in here, sorry.
It looks, I'm, there's, are you looking at a solid line or a dashed line?
It's a solid line, yeah, the keynote three, you're right.
Three, so that's, go ahead, you can answer that.
That's my deck on my house in 63.
Okay, I just wanted to understand whether that was intended graphically to be a building or a deck. So that's still open space over there. It's not a building.
No.
It's okay, yeah, got it. Thank you. Um, a couple of other questions about the drawings. Um, on drawing two, I think it might be the next drawing, 2.0.1. Oh, so it's the fire drawing. So on the fires drawing, the zone zero, which is describing the quote unquote immediate zone. Um, so that goes over the property line over, over on the west. And from what you've told us, actually over the adjacent building there too, right? Though the building's not drawn there, it would actually be quite a ways over the building probably, next door to you.
It would cover, it would, it would cover that part of that building, the edge of that building.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure graphically I was understanding this drawing, right? Thank you.
Description, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the description of the immediate zone. It says, "Remove any combustible outdoor furniture, doormats, no vegetation, do not store firewood."
Yeah, it's stuff that would endanger your house, right?
Right.
Yeah, I totally get that. It's stuff that would endanger your new building. That's the intent there. Got it.
And we pretty much have a solid wall of, of building at the neighbors, at the neighbors ADU.
Aren't there windows right there?
There is a small window, yeah, which we.
There might be a couple sets of windows in that elevation, actually.
Okay.
Should check on that. Um, okay, oh, my light just went off. I'm sorry.
I know we did spend some time trying to avoid that, you know, uh, being concerned with privacy.
Okay. All right, I think I just have one more. So drawing three, A 3.3, might take me a minute to scroll here. So I, I've actually been out to the site a couple of times to look at the story poles and kind of just sat there on the nice bench that's across the street, and your neighbor's got a couple of nice benches right there, which was nice. The carriage house, the ADU unit next door, in this drawing appears higher than it does to me when I'm standing out there on the street. I just wanted to make sure you were convinced of your accuracy um, on that drawing of sort of the heights of the building. I want to make sure we're not representing that little carriage house to be higher than it is in this drawing.
I don't know the answer to that, but it may, if it varies, it varies within maybe two feet of elevation.
Okay. And then in that same drawing, in, I know this is an orthogonal view of kind of the, you know, it's an abstraction, I understand that. But if the, if you really saw what that building looks like, it's skewed, so their building would actually be crossing that dashed line, which is representing the property line? The back corner of the building there, the carriage house?
Understood.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was seeing these right, and you felt that they were drawn accurately. I get it. Did, have either of you talked about project and the setbacks with the neighbor? That particular neighbor?
No.
No, the first opinion that we got was the letter that is in the, in the folder today.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That was a lot of laborious questions. Thanks for following along with me there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification from staff about the Hoyt ADU garage carriage house. Uh, that actually sits on the property line, right? On the, on that properties, on the carriage house properties property line?
On the side property line between the project site and, and the carriage house property.
Is it completely on the carriage house property, but on the property line, or does it come over?
Uh, I didn't think it crossed the property line. You know, I thought that one point of the carrot, you know, the carriage house and the house itself are kind of oriented towards the northwest.
Yeah.
So it's not like the whole building is running right on the side property line. They're, they're angled. Right? Am I, am I, am I reading the plans correctly?
Yeah, if you look at the Civil Survey, C 1.0, it, it shows pretty clearly what was surveyed in terms of existing conditions there.
So the point being that uh, that was the property line, and it's difficult for you to deal with that and have to move your property way over to the other side because because of pre-existing constraints. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. That's true.
Any other questions of the applicant or the owner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had one more.
Oh, don't go.
Okay, we're here.
Sorry, I just thought of this as I was looking at that last drawing. Um, and this just occurred to me while I was sitting, sitting out on the bench across the street. Um, is, is the space between your current house and this proposed project, is it a separate lot or is it part of the 63 Tampa Pius lot?
No, no, it's two separate lots, two separate parcel numbers, pay property tax on each one.
So do you have any intention to build on that lot, another house?
On which lot?
The, the middle lot.
No, there's only two, there's two lots.
Oh, so that's what I was asking, in between the two, is that a separate, that's not a separate lot?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
63, my existing house.
Because there's a lot of space in there.
I could throw another house in if you want.
Well, that, that, I was just wondering what the, what the neighborhood's going to turn out like. I'm just wondering, trying to think ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, yeah, get the mic.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom?
And this would be the chance for anyone watching us on Zoom to raise your hand, and I do see one hand raised from Mayor Frank Edgar.
Mr. Edgar, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just have a, a, a first question before I make a comment. The, the parking decks that are up at the top of the lot, would, do you have a date when those were built?
Let's see here, the background. Oh, that's not the, oh, I don't have my old staff report. Uh, it, all I could find in the file, Frank, was that it was in the early 1970s that the owner of the site granted easements to the two properties located on the upper south side of the site for the construction of covered parking decks. So I'm assuming the building permits were in the 70s.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did vote on that project of the parking decks. So, um, in the early 1980s, Fairfax merged over 1,000 lots that did not meet the minimum lot size standards as, as far as size and slope. And because of the slope, uh, it, it created a lot of lots that were no longer buildable. Those mergers were filed with the County Recorder's Office by the Town of Fairfax. At one time, Fairfax required an applicant to provide a report from the Recorder's and Assessor's Office to show that the vacant lot was not previously merged and is a standalone parcel. I thought that lot was merged or we required it to be merged at the time that those decks were approved in the 70s. And, and if it wasn't merged then, um, then it should have been merged in the 80s. So I'm just wondering, do you have a report from the, from the County Recorder or Assessor's Office? On the staff?
I mean, whatever happened, they didn't get merged and, and the regulation, I reviewed the regulation that was in place in the 80s when we did all the, all those tons of them, right? And this. And the subdivision map act said you could only merge lots if one of them was undeveloped with a structure for which there was a building permit. So the fact that there was a building permit for the parking decks eliminated it from the, uh, ability of the town to merge it. So if the merger was going to happen, it should have happened in the seventies and there's no record of that. It couldn't be legally merged in the, in the eighties because the structures were already there and there were building permits issued for it. The town didn't have the legal right to merge them.
We, we were conditioning mergers, uh, on applications in the seventies. We were conditioning mergers on applications in the sixties. All right, and I know a lot of them never got merged where the town council put a condition of that project on a merger. But anyway, so, um. The, the, the concern I have is it, it appears to be overdevelopment of that little, of that steep, steep lot. Um, you know, the, 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 the property that's to the west of, of, of this lot is going to be really adversely impacted. And, and it, it, it seems the, the, the proper thing to do is, is to rearrange what's going to go on to that, to this, to this parcel and move it further away from the adjacent property. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I see no other hands raised at this time, Chair Swift.
Thank you. And seeing no public comments from the audience here, I will close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Or a motion. I could make a motion if everybody's ready.
I'd like a discussion. Uh, I'd like to hear what other people think about the design element that I brought up, which is the white on the ground floor. Or what I think I understand to be the gray in the staff report, maybe a silver and a, a gray on the upper floor. Um, because I really don't like the white and I don't understand about, you know, changing it in the renderings, even though the staff report includes the grays. Uh, and then the other question I have relates to, uh, former Mayor Egger's uh, thoughts and how, um, the rest of the commission feels about the, how close, uh, the structure would be to the, you know, the owner's existing uh, residence and, and prop, and structures.
Mimi, can you see the color board?
Yeah, and I can see it in the staff report too, so. Who are making Pamela do this?
Well, no, but the actual color chip, this is the actual color chip pointing right here.
Yeah. And, and it's much preferable in my mind to what we see on the rendering, which is a stark white. That's my question, how others feel about that.
I agree with you, Mimi.
So the planning director pointed out, th- this is what's being proposed and we're going to make sure that it's that color. The architect indicated that they, it got lightened up in the rendering just because they were trying to make it fit in with the neighbor's white house, but, um, that's the color that they're proposing and it's pretty gray. We will make sure it is that color.
Any other thoughts at this point, Commissioner Newton?
Well, again, I wanted to have a discussion and I'm very interested in what Commissioner Kelly has to say with his hand raised.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. Um, well, with regard to the colors, I actually think that, um, if the gray was turned to a more white, it might create too much contrast in my eye. Um, so the color palette, I think, um, I'm on the fence about. I, I like the nod to the next door neighbor, which, um, would be strange because I think it's the only thing about the house that would nod to the neighbor. Um, so a white color might be the wrong thing to do. Um, with regard to the design of the house, um, I actually think that it's quite striking and, um, a nice design. I think that, um, it's a nice design, uh, sort of in an international way. I think it could be very well a nice house in Tahoe. Or a nice house in Southern California, or a nice house in Fairfax. I, I don't know that it necessarily sits within the site um, particularly well, uh, but I think it's articulated well. I think it'll be a nice house. Um, I think that there's some windows that look at the neighbors, particularly windows that are big bath, quite big bathroom windows on the, uh, upper story that looks right at 73. You can see them on drawing number four on, uh, sheet A 3.1. Um, those windows, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, look kind of right out at the deck of the neighbor, which seems peculiar to me to make that choice, uh, which makes me wonder whether they, uh, whether the designer, uh, considered the adjacency to that building at all. And of course, um, I, I believe that, uh, in our design review, we need to understand the, the bulk, the mass and the sighting of the building. And the sighting of the building is the thing that's most concerning to me. I think, um, I'm really conflicted about this project because I believe that the architect and the client are as good as we get in Fairfax. I think it's a really well-designed house. Um, I think that the client is, uh, trying to add something positive to the neighborhood as he told us last time we were coming here. Uh, the applicant, sorry, I shouldn't be saying client, applicant, uh, told us last time he was trying to add to the neighborhood, which is great. There's a lot of art in his existing yard, which I really appreciated sitting there on the bench across the street. Um, and I think that it'll be a handsome house. Unfortunately, I think that it's being a really bad neighbor. And I think it's being, it's setting a bad, um, tone to the neighborhood. Um, it just so happens that, uh, I've passed that carriage house on my way up the hill hundreds of times. And that carriage house, uh, sets a tone for the neighborhood. It really is a little marker for the hill. Uh, the scale, proportion, the quaintness of that little building, uh, really does, it's like a little gatehouse for the hill. And the attitude that this building appears to take to that neighbor is very unfortunate. And I think that's a design decision. Um, I would highly recommend that this building be moved 10 feet to the east. I think that the design can, at, can, uh, do that and still be a fantastic building. If you look at that sheet on particularly that I was pointing out, um, let's see, A 3.3. And look at all that open space between applicant's current house and his proposed house. I understand that it's going to create a really nice garden between the two buildings, but the, but to the detriment of the neighbor and the neighborhood. And I think that that could compromise with a simple 10-foot adjustment. Uh, it could make all the difference in the world to the project and to the neighborhood. And I'll leave it at that. And, and I will say that, um, it really caught my eye that I, I think it is, it's a fire hazard and it's a safety issue. Part of the setback requirement is separation between houses. I think that the house next door, quite frankly, is a fire hazard to this new proposed project. And we, we need to consider all those things. Thank you.
If I could jump in and just ask staff, wasn't there a reference to, uh, moving the house to the east as Commissioner Kelly is indicating that might result in more excavation or am I misremembering that?
Uh, no, I, the only comment I made was that moving it would be, would distribute the impacts of the house more equitably, equitably between the neighbors at 63 and 73 Tamalpais.
Okay, so there weren't any other reasons not to move it over there?
Hmm, nope, no.
We're in a discussion right now, so.
I had a question about that point, though. I think what Commissioner Newton was referring to is there's a note in the combined side yard setback variance section of the staff report on page 10. Um, that says that, um, moving the proposed structure, uh, would significantly increase the amount of excavation required to develop the site.
If, what I meant, what I meant, there was not, it wasn't relating to side yard setbacks. It was moving it out of the front yard setback. If you're trying to move it back to try to meet the combined front and rear setback, right? It would definitely significantly increase the excavation, but I don't know that sliding it over would, you know, the, the, when I look at that slope, it's pretty, I don't know, it seems pretty regular, you know, there's not, um, you know, I might change it a little bit, but I don't think it's going to substantially change it sliding it over.
Let me go ahead and, um, go, go ahead. I'll wait until you're done.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I want to echo both the praise and concerns of Commissioner, um, Kelly. Um, I have another thing that I've been contemplating about. The, in my mind, so the FAR is calculated based on the entire property size. The very fact that you or the prior owner provides an easement either for benefit or out the goodness of its heart doesn't negate the fact that you need to count whatever's built on that towards that entire property. Now, it's more a legalist question, but, um, I, I, to me, you can't ignore that. There's two buildings there, there's two structures there. They have to be equated to in the overall calculation of the FAR. Um, those two things probably are six hundred feet together, uh, so. And that's, that's the part I'm struggling with. I, because if you ignore that, you create a very odd precedent. Um, it's unfortunate because it affects the whole thing, but, um, that, that is my big concern because otherwise you could build whatever you want on the lot simply by making an easement and giving it to somebody else. And that, that, of course, is not the intent of the, of the, of the planning code. So I, that's why my problem is, I believe that it needs to be included.
Okay, so, um, I'll provide some comments now. Um, as to the color, I think the color board that was submitted, um, and I agree with staff, would be the one that, um, best fits the property. Um, I think to the comment about windows, bathroom windows, um, I think on there, there is and staff can comment on there, there's a piece of glass there and that glass in the bottom right represents, um.
Correct, it's privacy glass.
It's privacy glass for some of the windows.
Yes.
On the building, okay. Um. As to the concerns that commissioners have made about, um, the sighting of this project close to 73 Tamalpais and the garage with the small ADU on top. Looking at that ADU, um, it's small. There's no windows on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, as I'm facing that building, there are two windows in the ADU. So you've got a prom, a project that is sited five feet away from that. That's going to have like a wall there and five feet away from a small ADU that's got two windows on that side. Um. And I think the rendering, the A7 um, that we received was, um, informative in relation to those two buildings. Um, and that again, for me, is a concern that this, um, project was cited to one side of the parcel. And when we look at properties and we consider them, as Commissioner said, for a design review, our criteria includes consideration of whether the proposed development creates a well-composed design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area. Um, and the elements of design to be considered can include arrangement on, of the site, the height of the application of the project. Our general plan talks about preserving, maintaining and enhancing in a sustainable manner the existing character scale and quality of life in the residential neighborhoods. Um, new and renewed development shall be compatible with a general character and scale of structures in the vicinity. We've got which we all applaud having ADUs. Um, affordable ADUs to provide more housing. And, and when I look at the ADU at 73 Tamalpais, I'm certain that's, would be an affordable ADU, um, providing affordable housing in that neighborhood. The fact that I think there's options here to change the siding of this project to maybe more center in the parcel. I think in the, um, staff report, it discusses under design review, the possibility of moving it over and that that may require a little bit more excavation. It may require, um, relocation of a rear entry stairway, but I think the impact of this project to that ADU and the house at 73, to me, is more of a concern than, um, what would be needed to move that project more central on that parcel. And, and for that reason, um, I couldn't approve this project as it is now without, um, looking at reciting that, that application. So, um, due to the effects on that ADU, I would have to vote no on the application as it is presented now.
Commissioner Fregoso.
Thank you. Um. I like, I like the design of, of this residence. But when I look at the adjacent properties, I was out there taking a look today and the one on the left is this beautiful, I'm not sure if that's a craftsman house or what the term would be, but it has these lovely small windows. Uh, it, the coloring, the lighting, it sits back a little more on the property, even though it's also three stories high. It looks half the size of this one that is proposed. Um, yes, while the cottage was built on the property line, it's been there for a long time. And the house behind it also is a good-sized house, but, uh, again, it's more in keeping with the architectural style of that neighborhood. And, um, I've, I've. I've, I've, from the last meeting, had concerns about that huge deck off the side. And I understand there's no level ground to stand on, on the property, but, uh, perhaps instead of building to the back as much as possible, uh, some type of level ground could be created at the back, at, at lower levels of the house instead of, uh, the decks that are on the second and third levels, kind of looking over, uh, the entire neighborhood. Uh, I also would, uh, agree that, you know, what would be great is if you could take this design and put it in the Xerox machine and change the proportion, so it just shrinks it down a little bit. Uh, you know, if you could put it in the washing machine like you do your socks and they're a size smaller, I think that would be perfect. And perhaps set back just slightly more than it is, uh, given the massive face of the structure. So, it's beautiful, but somewhat out of character with the neighborhood.
Commissioner Jansen?
I'd like to finish back to the zoning code if I can. Um, so in order to approve the variance, we have to do a couple of findings. And there, for me, there are two that I cannot. So section seventeen oh twenty-eight oh seventy. A two and A four both fail for me. And A four is the, uh, impact, detrimental impact to, uh, the other property, which we just talked about, it's there. And that's A four, A two is the one of a special privilege and that would equate to making a frivolous interpretation of the FAR calculation, ignoring two existing structures on the same property. Um, combined, I reached the same conclusion that I would not be able to approve it as it currently stands.
So can I take, and I guess it would be appropriate to take a headcount? A verbal headcount, um.
Well, could I ask a question of staff before you do that? Um, given the comments that many of the commissioners have made this evening, I'm just wondering if, you know, one of the options moving forward is for the applicant to agree to, uh, come back again and, and agree to, um, you know, additional time, or if this is something that simply needs to be, uh, disapproved by the planning commission. So I just was hoping for some input from staff.
Yeah, what you usually do, um, you ask the applicant if he will agree to a mutual continuance with the commission for no more than ninety days. And if they're willing to work on redesigning and addressing the comments that the planning commission has said, and then if they agree to it, you can go ahead and take action to continue it, or the applicants can, um, indicate that they would prefer to have a decision tonight. And then you would take an action on the, on this project as it, as it has been proposed.
Okay, if, um, the applicant can come back up to the podium, please. So you heard the, um, uh, Planner Neil's comments as far as options, and you've heard our concerns about the project as submitted. Would you be willing to relook this project and come back?
Well, I obviously have to speak to my architect. Um, I think, uh, moving it naturally would not be a problem. So that wouldn't be, you know, we already discussed that. Um, and I think Ron game indicated that it's really not such a big deal in the general scheme of things to move it. So that's one issue. Uh, I'm not really clear exactly what else. You're talking about the scale of the house. You're shrinking it in a Xerox machine. So you probably have to tell us exactly what you would, uh, I know you're not going to tell us, but you obviously want the, the house to be smaller. You want it to be moved. Um, I'm not really clear what else. I mean, I think we can accommodate both of those things. So, you know, and we can, I, I know if we ask for a decision now, you're going to say no. So obviously, obviously I don't want that. Um, we've put so much energy into it, so much money. It seems such a struggle to build here. Um, and, you know, my, one of my comments, I'm sorry to say, but like, you've got four hundred and ninety houses to build and I am a community member who's really trying to do my best. I can't imagine the struggles that other people are going to have to build so many units, uh, in such a short period of time for the housing element. I thought I'd like to be a good partner with the planning commission. Uh, so if it was just a question of moving it, I think that could be easily accommodated. If it was a question of making it smaller, we could certainly talk about reducing the ceiling heights, which would make it seem a little less massive. I, I'm not sure about the decks and everything. I mean, the decks are not indispensable. I'd like to think that we could accommodate you. I mean, it's been, you know, as you can imagine, we spent thousands of dollars already. That would be a complete waste of time. And I think I'm providing something good for Fairfax. You know, so yes, of course, it's about me and I'm building a house, but I think everybody will benefit from it. I don't really think it's out of character with the neighborhood. It's a very eclectic neighborhood. A new house is always going to look like a new house. It's always going to be slightly not out of character. It's going to look new, whereas all the houses, including mine, uh, just, you know, they've got the patina of the neighborhood. So, um, I would like to continue it. Rather than get a decision now if that, you know, obviously I was, I speak to Ron about the feasibility of what you're asking.
It, it's a very constrained site. That's what we're talking. It's a small site, very constrained site. It's got a unusual neighbors, the parking deck and an encroaching, uh, two-story ADU. Okay, so on the other hand, we also have a parking requirement that we're trying to squeeze in the front. You've asked for an encroachment about that. So if we move too far away from uh, the, uh, carriage house, I think we're going to get into a problem with actually parking, meeting the parking requirement. So I could see a move from the five-foot setback, which the owner completely had a right to do per code to eight feet on that side as a compromise so that we don't get too far into the upper part of the hill. There was an economic consideration when we were citing it in terms of, oh my God, we're grading so much here. How can we reduce the grading? That is a low point on the site. The more you move it, uh, in the direction you're talking about, the more excavation. Maybe it's, you know, eight percent more, something like that. It's not giant amount, but we want to make sure that we're able to enter the house, not have a bunch of retaining walls over on the, I believe it's the east, more of the east side. So it's one of those kind of puzzles. So I think we can, uh, try to, I, I think it's a reasonable, uh, request to move away from the carriage house. I took the comments. Uh, but I don't know that we can really center it in the site without getting into some other difficulties. So I would propose that we could do eight feet.
Well, I think, um, I appreciate that you're willing to continue this and, and look at this. I think the, um, and the commission will um, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the major concern was the siding to the ADU. I think we addressed the colors, um, if the commissioners want to include something beyond the siding to be considered in the ninety day window.
So, so staff would like you guys to take a, to take a straw poll vote so that it's clear to the applicants, how many of you are fine with the mass and size with the house moved over? And how many of you think the house needs to be made smaller and the application needs to be, the FAR needs to be recalculated to include that parking in this house decreased in size so that they have clear direction, you know, they'll know.
Yeah. Let me clarify that. So I think regarding the FAR, it needs to be clear how it complies. So that does not necessarily mean it needs to shrink, but it's currently, it's, oop, it's a, it is an undefined area. And I think that's the problem. It can't be hanging in the air. It needs to be.
So they need a variance.
It, it, it needs a variance or it needs to be defined how it is, right? You, and currently the FAR said that the max that's possible at point four, but it ignores that.
Wait a minute, you know, let me think about this. You're, are you sure you're not meaning lot coverage? Because floor area ratio is a calculation of interior living space and the garages wouldn't count towards that. I think you're, you're meaning lot coverage, right?
Right, right.
Okay, lot coverage, yeah.
Yeah. And so it, it does not necessarily mean that the design has to change, but it is something that is unclear and it's not tied down. And that's not good because that sets a precedent.
I did hear, I did hear one commissioner say they thought it need, this needed to be decreased in size. So we just want you guys to do a straw poll on the issues so that they know.
Yeah, I think that I could.
Planning Director wants to address this.
Sure. No, the sentiment's there, but I think if it complies within the maximum sizes, it, it's, it's okay. And that, that seems, so that's fine. Yeah. Right, thank you.
Planning Director, did you want to make a comment?
You know, I think that, that Linda has pretty much handled it. We just want clarification from the commission. So it, it seems like the idea of moving the overall structure toward the center of the property, not centered necessarily. And that's not something to decide tonight. We need to work with the applicant to, to determine what are the factors, how much it can move. You know, what are the impacts of that? And then I agree in terms of lot coverage, uh, those parking structures, uh, will be counted. If there's a need to then renotice for a variance or exception, but to acknowledge those structures in terms of the application, we would do that. So I, I think that's the, the general direction. And as Linda indicated, it would be very appropriate if the applicants are agreeing, agreeing to this, to then, you know, indicate a mutual agreement to continue for, say, ninety days. Work with the staff to address these issues so that the siding of this home is more compatible with surrounding structures. I think that's fundamentally your issue, correct?
And, and just for clarity, let me, um, poll if there was any other issue besides, um, the siding. And then, and then, um, the lot coverage. So anything on this side other than what we've already addressed?
Yes, so the siding, uh, would be a great improvement, but my bigger concern is the architectural flavor. You have a magnificent house next door. The gray and white house, the beautiful windows, it's the scale of it, the architecture is, is beautiful. You can see a lovely residence. It's a little hard to tell. I mean, clearly it's a residence because we know it's going to be a house, but it looks so institutional. There's no front porch, there's no front walk, there's no, it looks like all garages down below. Frankly, it looks like all garages on the second story. There's no distinguishing architectural nuance that says this is, sits in a historic residential neighborhood of Fairfax. Uh, and so, uh, I would appreciate more of a livable feel, more like your house. That look and feel a, as opposed to institutional, black and brown and that you, you, you can't see in, you can, the decks are huge on either. It's just, uh, overwhelms the small site, which is obviously not your fault.
So to my fellow commissioners, and I know Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised, but to my fellow commissioners, um, since we are doing a poll, does any other commissioner feel that the house has to be redesigned as Commissioner Fregoso has discussed? Because we are polling, so we want to make sure that we provide the correct input. Does anyone else concur with Commissioner Fregoso?
I, I agree with Commissioner Fregoso in general. I don't know if that would be, uh, you know, a factor that would mean I would vote against it if it stayed the way it is, but I definitely agree with what she's saying.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I, I do agree with Commissioner Fregoso. I think me, uh, I, what I heard, you say commissioner, and, uh, what I took in from it was, um, I, I think that the house could have a, another layer of filigree, uh, if you will, another layer of um, human scale detail that would make it, uh, more visually inviting to the neighborhood. And also fit in with the neighborhood a little better, even to, as she said, your own house next door. Um, I, I, I do want to say though, I think it's a handsome building and I think you've done a very good job. I think that that would add to, um, the positive nature of the project and certainly, um, let us know that you, you're trying to fit in and, um, be a good neighbor in the neighborhood. Um, and I'd like to just point out that, um, I do, uh, agree also with something that was said just a second ago about the project needing just to be, to acknowledge your neighbors and neighborhood a little more. Um, I, I looked at the drawings again, and I do think those bathroom windows, uh, appear to not have screening, which a lot of the other windows do. Uh, and I think you're looking right up at the living room. I wasn't right with the deck, but I think you're looking right at the living room of your next door neighbor. And it just doesn't seem like you've acknowledged the site at all. And I think that to approve the project, I'll need to see that. I'll need to see that, um, you've tried to literally fit in the neighborhood. And I think that a move of, I'll say it again, ten feet, uh, would help me think that you're doing that as well.
The staff have enough information?
I don't know if it's going to pencil out.
So do we need to make a motion to continue?
Yes.
Before we make a motion, I just wanted to add a few more, uh, comments. Uh, just that I am very, uh, sympathetic and appreciative of the comments that the applicant made and I shared the concerns with respect to the neighbor. Um, and I think it's something that we always should be considering. Uh, I would take into strong consideration the cost and difficulty of moving over the lot, say, the amount that you, uh, mentioned versus the amount that Commissioner Kelly has noted that he would appreciate seeing because I think it benefits the neighborhood to have more neighbors and a stronger community. I think that we really should be encouraging the town to be a good partner with somebody looking to develop, uh, a very cleverly designed project, uh, really being efficient with the space on such an unusually shaped lot that happens to have a neighbor built right up on the side property line, happens to have decks in the back property line. Um, so, you know, the commission, yeah, I think you have a sense of, of what the commission's looking to see. I just wanted to reiterate that my main concern is just the proximity to the neighbor, but it's, for me, it's still going to be just a balancing of how much you should be doing versus how much is reasonable to ask.
And, and through the chair, if again, you could just confirm with the applicants that uh, they're in agreement in terms of the continuance for ninety days to address, respond to Commissioner comments. Thank you.
Uh, I don't know that we're in agreement with ninety days. I don't think ninety days is necessary. I mean, we've got the spotted owls on the one side and we got the, uh, grading ordinance on the other side. It sounds like you guys spent about three months building in, uh, Fairfax. And so we're trying to hit. And so we're trying to hit
That's just
that window.
Yeah, that's just the standard language that we use because seek, I mean, this permit streamlining act with a, with a mutual agreements of a continuance allows a continuance not to exceed ninety days. But if you get the information to us, we can get it on a sooner agenda as long as the agenda is full.
Yeah, because if he's got a chance to build this year, uh, we're already up against the deadline.
So you all are in agreement with the continuance not to exceed the ninety days then?
I mean, I, we don't think your comments are completely clear, but uh we get the gist of it, yeah.
All right. So do I have a motion?
Are you okay with that? Yeah.
I, I move continuance of this item as agreed upon by the owner and his uh and his architect to uh respond to uh siding, uh design, massing and architectural uh character, uh charm of, of the building and uh a continuance uh not to exceed ninety days. Do I need to read out all the?
Yeah. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
So motion for go so second. Pfeffer, can we have a roll call, please?
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Fregoso?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
So a five minute break? Are we ready to reconvene?
Recording in progress.
Shall I go?
So if we can have item four two two nine Tamil Pious Road?
So this project is for the construction of a six hundred and fifteen square foot deck attached to the existing two thousand four hundred and seventy one square foot, three story, single family residence. The, the deck will be constructed on the north side of the structure and include a stairway accessing the existing deck off the master bedroom off the second floor of the structure. A hot tub is proposed, proposed that will be set into the deck. The deck will be constructed on a portion of the site that was leveled by the construction and backfilling of two concrete retaining walls. Um, the area is already used as outdoor living space. They have some landscaping beds in there. Um. So the use of the area is not really changing. The new deck is going to be elevated four feet above the ground. So um it will raise the outdoor living space up a little bit. The project requires a conditional use permit because the site has a fifty seven percent slope. And according to the code, a site with fifty seven percent slope would have to be a minimum of forty nine thousand square feet in size and a hundred and ninety one, one feet wide to comply with the regulations. Um, but the code doesn't prohibit any construction on substandard sites. It just requires that the new construction obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission. To approve a conditional use permit, you have to be able to make four findings. They are that the granting of the use permit will not constitute a grant of special privilege. The granting of the use permit will not create a public nuisance or cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties or premises. That the approval of the use permit is not contrary to the objectives, goals or standards um set forth in any master plan or in the zoning ordinance. And that approval of the use permit will result in equal or better development of the premises than would otherwise be the case. And the approval is in the public enter, interest and for the protection or enhancement of the community. So the proposed deck meets all the setback regulations. It doesn't result in the property exceeding the lot coverage limitations. Um. It's going to maintain a forty three foot setback from the closest residential structure at two twenty five Tamil Pious Road and approximately a forty eight foot setback from the residence, the other nearest residence, which is down slope of the site at eighty six Reed, Reedon Avenue. And the deck will not be visible from Tamil Pious Road. There are other similar sized decks nearby in the Tamil Pious neighborhood. Therefore, staff feels the deck has been located appropriately on the site and it complies with the purpose section of the conditional use permit ordinance. No agencies or departments commented on the project. They didn't have any comments and didn't put any conditions on it. Site's not located within a quarter mile of any known northern spotted owl nesting site. It won't result in the removal of any trees. And therefore, we're recommending that you approve application twenty three dash zero two by adopting resolution number twenty dat, twenty twenty three dash zero two, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. That would conclude our report.
Um, any questions for staff from the commission? Commissioner Newton?
Hey, thanks. Um, so my question is whether or not this is the kind of item that might be ministerially handled by the planning department? If we could somehow create ministerial approvals? I'm interested in what staff has to say.
Definitely. Yes.
Any other questions? Uh, question for staff, I don't recall if you mentioned it, but the plans have a enclosed sauna on them.
Yeah, there's, there's language about a closed sauna, which was part of the original uh submittal, which was uh designed to require a variance of the combined side yard setback. And staff advised the applicants that we didn't believe we could recommend findings for that because there's definitely a way to design a deck that meets the setback regulations. So the project was redesigned and the sauna was eliminated as part of the project. And they're just going to go with the hot tub now. The deck got a little smaller.
So we could add that to the resolution that it, that.
Are you, are you seeing it on, on a plan or is it just described?
It was on the plant, the plans identified the scope of the project as the deck and the hot tub.
So when you, that first condition, you can just add at the end that the description, the description of the project shall be revised to eliminate the sauna when it's submitted for a building permit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? We have no applicant here unless he is on Zoom.
We do have the applicant and uh the architect online on Zoom.
Great. So if the applicant and or architect would like to provide any comments, they could do so now.
Um, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, Laura, please go.
Okay, good. I couldn't, I couldn't tell on my end, so um, yeah, so it's, it's um a straightforward project with um low level, mostly low level deck, you know, and kind of a, an semi unimproved area of the, of the lot. Um, and yes, only the hot tub is proposed at one time. The, the owner had um was considering it, but then when we realized that um the, the setback was, was greater than we had originally thought, then he decided to um remove that element from the, from the plan. So new plans had been, were resubmitted. Um, the owner has spoken with his adjacent neighbor to the north and she's in support of the project. So I want to make note of that. And um a sustainable decking material from bamboo has been selected that's available from Fairfax lumber. And um I did ask Linda a question regarding condition number two and if that applied to this kind of project. And I think Linda was going to look into that for me. And then um uh and available for any questions you may have.
Does anyone have questions for? Seeing none, um Linda, did you want to address the architect's question?
No, I need to check with the building official.
Okay.
I believe that um building checks with all the different agencies again before they issue building permits. And that's something that I, I'm not sure how they do it if they ask the different agencies to respond to them in emails to reviewing the projects or if they just verbally talk with them. I mean, yeah. I know the fire department is contacted for all projects prior to issuance of the building permit. And I believe MMWD and even if they don't comment at the planning stage, they still are brought into the process before a building permit's issued to make sure that they're um like the deck isn't going to cover any kind of an easement or any kind of an inlet to some of their facilities, you know? Yeah. Like in case they missed it at the planning stage.
Okay, thank you. Um, thanks, Laura. Open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public?
And we'll just take a moment to remind the public that now is the time to raise your hand on this issue. If you would like to speak on it, raise hand button is in the center of your screen and I do not see any more hands raised.
Thank you. So I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion? Or a motion?
If I may, I think uh this is a very straightforward project. I think it uh improves uh the access and livability of uh, of the house and uh and, and, and safety. So uh I think it's a very straightforward design and uh I like it.
I'll make a motion to move resolution twenty three oh two for conditional use permit for six hundred fifteen square foot deck and a hot tub at twenty two nine, uh two hundred and twenty nine Tamil Pious Road with the correction of the cover drawing to not include a sauna that would be stripped from that drawing.
I'll second.
Call roll. Pfeffer?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Fregoso?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, and there is a ten day, ten business day window for anyone wishing to file an appeal on this application.
At a cost of six hundred dollars with the city clerk.
Thank you. So um that's the end of our applications. So we're going to go on to minutes. Does anyone have corrections to the minutes from October twenty seventh? So Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, I have the same comments I had at the previous meeting when we continued these minutes, which is you get to page two and it says start here. And then the rest of the minutes don't pertain to the October twenty seven, twenty twenty two meeting. So it looks like they are half done or not even half done. So that's my issue. I also have a couple of comments on the December minutes, but I'll just take a breath and say I don't agree with the October minutes.
Did you get that, Linda?
Yes, and this is the second time this has happened because we found the correct minutes that covered everything. And I'm not sure how these incorrect ones got in here again. I don't. Somehow we're having some kind of a breakdown.
These are incorrect, the October minutes, we should, should.
Yeah, so, so, so there are two sets of minutes floating around from October. In one of them, Tony had only partially finished them and they were sent to us, right? And then she's, she hunted around and she found the correct ones that were completely done, which I swore we've attached to this packet, but somehow we're getting the wrong set again. So I'm not exactly sure. David's going to have to
I think.
somehow help us get through this. So just continue those again and we will make sure before the next packet. No, you can deal with December.
So on the October ones, and I'm not sure I heard Commissioner Newton correctly, but it identified that we had no public comments um during open time. We did have a comment from.
Wrong minutes, Cindy.
I'm sorry.
They're not the correct minutes, so I don't know why you would need to correct them.
Yeah.
Are you looking at something before page two?
Wait a minute, now wait a minute.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute. So the ones that were incorrect had, had um had Phil, made it look like Phil and um PJ left the meeting after the first item, but that's not happening in these, so.
I think it may be another online versus in uh mailbox uh discrepancy because the ones I picked up from the mailbox match or
They're correct.
Yeah, they don't have the same issue that I had last time.
Okay, so somehow the wrong one got scanned to the website and the ones you guys that have paper packets have the correct ones. So we do need to continue it, but at least okay, somehow, somehow. Yes. Uh, well, I mean, does it really matter? I think we should wait because we'll get everybody's comments at one time, but at least we're not somehow Tara must have been it scanned it from, I don't know, because these are correct.
Oh, sorry. I did a norma.
Or maybe the IT people are doing something.
So what we have in our packet and online matches and then we can correct those at the next meeting.
Packets have the correct set and the people that are looking online, the online ones are the ones that combine two different dates.
Okay.
And.
All right. Well, we'll continue.
We'll continue. TJ are there in the beginning for one item and then they're gone.
Right. We'll continue the October minutes.
Yes.
Does anyone have correct?
I'll move to do that. Uh, Cindy, I think maybe if you give your comments, maybe in hard copy to Linda, that would help streamline the net when they come back though, right?
I can do that. I can send you my corrections to what I have.
Yeah, and if anyone else has corrections, you can send them to me and I can make them and um we'll include hopefully the correct minutes.
And does anyone have corrections to the December minutes? Maybe we can take care of those at this meeting. Commissioner Newton?
Okay, page two uh of the December fifteen, twenty twenty two minutes right before uh well, item two on page two, right before it indicates where Chair Fregoso closed the public hearing, we should change Planning Director Wolford to interim Planning Director Waltering. Just a thought.
Thank you.
And then on uh page four uh second bullet top of the page, it says she-massing, which is just a fascinating phrase. I think it means she said massing. So anyway, she-massing.
Well, that is attributed to Commissioner Fregoso, so.
I can fix that one.
Any other corrections to December?
Okay, let me, let.
Thank you. Pulling my own Normas here. Um. This doesn't make sense. The photographs of adjacent houses show that many of the elements are similar. Um, the main house is a structure confined on both sides, but their upper floor deck is built out into the hillside. My concern was that the isometric drawings did not adequately show the siding and spacing. I wouldn't, I don't think I said I don't have a problem with the design. I said the design, I don't have a problem with the design, but the massing and scale. And then on the next page, yes, the project design and massing seems significantly larger than the adjacent neighborhood properties and that the house is extremely large. Or very, yeah, extremely large. And I think that's it.
Any other corrections to December minutes?
Um, in the roll, uh just Philip Pfeffer.
Oh, yes. That is wrong.
We have a motion to correct uh to approve the December minutes with the corrections made.
I move that we approve the December minutes with the corrections that have been made.
And all with a with maybe a little slight amendment and to continue the October minutes to the next meeting.
I will accept that friendly amendment, yes.
Second.
Okay, and I will call the roll. Pfeffer?
Aye.
Fregoso?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're on to the Planning Director's report.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Really two items. One item is just a an update on the housing element project. Uh, the housing element project is moving forward. As you're aware, we have a new consultant team working on that diet in Batia from Oakland. And they have produced a number of documents recently that have been reviewed or are being reviewed by staff and the city council, I should say town council subcommittee. They provided us with a needs assessment, a constraints analysis, and also an affirmatively furthering fair housing report. So those reports are being reviewed or reviewed. And there'll be foundations for the local draft review document, the housing element document that they're working on. And we expect that that local public review housing element will be completed sometime toward the end of February. And so as soon as that's completed, we'll put that out for a thirty-day required local public review. So end of February, perhaps early March, uh we're hoping to get an administrative draft from Diet and Batia of that document mid, about mid-February, the subcommittee and staff will look at it as soon as that's ready to to put out to the public again, late February, early March, we'll put out that public review draft for thirty-day review. There'd be a a public meeting during that period. Comments would be received at that meeting and also by email and and mail uh to the staff. Those comments would be responded to, the responses to the comments, the comments in the draft would all be packaged, presented to our town council and then on to HCD, State Housing and Community Development for ninety-day public review or review by that that team, HCD. Given the fact that we're behind schedule, significantly behind schedule, as I think you're aware, technically, the housing element should be adopted by January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. We will not meet that date. Uh, the expectation is that by the time we go through the full process and the the document has been reviewed by HCD staff edits made, go through a public hearing process before the commission and council, it likely will be something like June of twenty-twenty-three is kind of the target at this point. So uh we will be beyond the date that uh would be hoped for. Other jurisdictions are in that same situation. And in fact, in Southern California, I think about sixty percent of the jurisdictions in Southern California that went through this process early earlier did not complete on time. In any case, we have our work cut out for for us. We have met with the local public review person with HCD, uh Reed Miller, and discussed with him the work done to date, reviewed our site inventory, got some guidance in terms of how to um look at our site inventory. It looks like in terms of meeting our Rena, which is about four hundred and ninety units that this community, the town of Fairfax, should facilitate the development of during the next eight years. It looks like in terms of the site inventory that has been put together that that number of units with a slight margin could be achieved. So that is that is the good news. It's a slight margin and we'd like to do better than that. So the Diet and Batia team uh and ourselves, we were talking to HCD representatives about what could we do to increase those numbers? We have a number of environmental constraints here in Fairfax. We have steep slopes. We have creeks. We have liquefaction issues. Uh, so what what could we do in terms of perhaps mitigating some of these sites to increase the yield or numbers that we could propose? They've given us some ideas. So Diet and Batia is going to look at that inventory and try to suggest um some mitigation measures to give us a greater margin in terms of numbers of units that could be achieved. So a lot of work is being done on that. That's a major focus uh in our department and certainly with that consultant team. And again, uh we're hoping to have a local public review draft prepared and ready to put out at the end of February or early March. Uh, something else, I I sent you an email, the Commissioners an email regarding the upcoming Planning Commissioners Academy in Garden Grove and it's at the end of March, the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of of March of this year. The idea is that Commissioners and a staff member would probably go on the twenty-eighth. We've talked about this very briefly in the past. And I would really appreciate it uh if you could take a look at the link that I provided and and get back to me um as soon as you can, hopefully early next week to let me know if you have interest, if it if it works for you in terms of schedule. Again, the idea is you'd probably go on the twenty-eighth of March, come back on the thirty-first. I think some of you have gone to the Planning Commissioners Academy in the past. Um, I certainly have. And in talking to to some of you, I think that collectively, it's it's been a great experience. I heard some very good things from some of the Commissioners. I know I've had some very good experiences there. For those who haven't gone or haven't gone for a while, I would strongly encourage you to go if you can make it work. So, you know, please let me know early next week. The link I provided to you is online. And then with that information, we can start making reservations in terms of registrations, hotel, travel accommodations and so forth. So at this point, I mean, do some of you have interest in in doing that? And not that you have to decide right now, but but hopefully early next week, by then you could get back to me. Any?
Through the chair, I highly recommend that the new Commissioners go. It would be very important for them.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yeah, I uh looking to see if I can squeeze in some uh professional uh events uh nearby. So just trying to coordinate with my work, but it looked very interesting to me.
Yeah, it it's a great, it's a great opportunity to network and and also learn about a whole variety of things. Uh, design review roles and responsibilities. I think that Commissioner Jansen, you had gone in the past, I believe, and and found it very useful, I I think, right?
Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, question. Uh, so the, I've gone there uh recently and it was a great experience. Um. While I was there, I I um connected with the planning commission from Union City and they had sent basically everybody off their a planning commission, a lot of new people as well. What I noticed, and that's my question, what I'm gonna ask the director, is it the idea to send multiple people? Because what I noticed is because they were there together, that created some uh um interesting dynamic within that commission, right? It's a bonding experience as well. Um, so is is the intent here, like we did it last year, that you, which is a good plan to send everybody who's new to it to that? Or is it your plan to have multiple people go?
Uh, the the hope is that multiple people would go. So uh this is uh an invitation to the Commissioners, all Commissioners. So obviously for the newer Commissioners, definitely, if you can make it, that would be terrific. But again, uh Commissioner Jansen, as you're indicating, it's also a networking, a bonding experience. And uh it's it's just a great learning experience. So no, this is this is open to the Commissioners. So any of you that can make it, please let me know. And if you can do that early next week, then we can start, you know, doing some work on our end in terms of registrations, travel, accommodations, et cetera. So yes, multiple would be great.
Commissioner Newton had a question.
Thank you, and thank you so much, uh Director Waltering for the uh information, especially about the um the housing and the Rena numbers and the status of the draft coming through and and when we can anticipate public review. Could you tell us what the town expects our role to be? Because if if it's really the subcommittee and staff that are going to be reviewing and the subcommittee is the is the council members, right? It's it's a subcommittee of the council. Um, I don't really hear a role for the planning commission in this development process. So if you could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
I I'd be happy to do that. So you're correct. In terms of the subcommittee, it's two members of the town council. And the two members of the town council and staff are working directly with the Diet and Batia team in terms of doing site visits, reaching out to property owners, reviewing draft documents. However, when the local public review draft goes out, uh planning commissioners, public members, all can certainly comment on that local public review draft. And with the local public review draft, the comments received, whether in writing or verbally at a community meeting, will need to be responded to by the consultant team and staff. And then packaged, as as I mentioned earlier, presented to the council for a review in terms of, you know, how the the team is responding to the comments or questions before it goes on to HCD for the ninety-day review by HCD. So uh to be direct, your your opportunity or an opportunity would be when the local public review draft is released, I would encourage you to review it, provide your comments on it, and your comments will be responded to, considered and responded to.
Would we do that during a planning commission meeting? Or are you saying that like if I wanted to submit comments, I would be submitting them as Fairfax resident, Amy Newton, versus us holding maybe uh time for the public to comment at one of our planning commission meetings during the the comment period?
That that's correct. I'm not, I am not at this time anticipating that there would be a planning commission meeting. I'm anticipating that it would be a community meeting. Um, and at that community meeting, all community members, including Commissioners, could provide comments either verbally or separately in writing. I do expect, of course, that when it comes to formal adoption subsequently of the housing element, that there would be, of course, a review and recommendation by the full planning commission. And and I'll, you know.
So to to um, because that was a question that I had to Commissioner Newton's comment. Um, and you look around to all the other towns that are in the same boat we are as far as um having to do our housing element, um including the county where the planning commission has had individual meetings as planning commissioners on the draft housing element and makes recommendations. So and the planning commission here, probably for the last one, had that role as well. Um, so it sounds like and you can clarify when you, what you mean by the formal adoption, but it doesn't sound like in Fairfax that the planning commission is going to have a separate meeting on the draft housing element. Is that correct? And all the other documents that would go with it, such as the safety element and anything else. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily correct. When I refer to the local public review draft, that would be a community meeting. Um, when these documents go forward for consideration for adoption, the full planning commission would consider the documents, including the sequoia documents, and make a recommendation to the town council on those documents, safety, housing, et cetera, and on the sequoia document.
So is there a timeline for that, that we can anticipate when we would be doing that as part of the project, just for?
I can give you a rough timeline. Sure, be happy to. So as you know, I mean, I I've mentioned this already and I think it's fairly common knowledge. It is common knowledge. We are considerably behind. And the the technical compliance date, due date for adoption is January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Um, we will not be close to meeting that. So I would expect that if we have a local public review draft out, let's say, end of February, early March for thirty days, we're talking April, then getting comments gathered, presenting the package to the town council in terms of, here's the draft, here are the comments, here are the responses to the comments, here's the package uh with recommendations going to HCD for their ninety-day review. That could be April, May, something like that. And then getting comments back from HCD. We're we're probably pushing June, something like that of this year in in terms of, and that's probably optimistic, to be very honest, uh in terms of our local formal approval process of the environmental document and also the housing element. And we we don't know exactly um how many iterations there might be with HCD. What we're trying to do is to meet with HCD staff. We were fortunate to not only meet with the local reviewer Reed Miller, but we also met with the head, uh the lead in terms of uh reviewing housing elements here in the state. We met with uh Paul McDougall and we had a good meeting with both of them. Actually, we had two meetings. And we had a good meeting with both of them. Actually, we had two meetings with Reed. So what what we're going to try to do is to meet with them as frequently as we can, so that when we submit our draft, hopefully we're responding to what they're looking for and we don't go through two or three iterations of reviews with HCD, but hopefully one or two to speed things up. But in any case, to be responsive to your questions, probably June or so before things are packaged and ready for formal consideration by by the planning commission.
So at that point in time, it's almost a done document before it comes back to the planning commission for formal approval as the perhaps last step before it goes to the council to approve what has been worked on to this point, correct?
Well, I I wouldn't say it necessarily that. I mean, I, you you know, and I'm I'm taking some exception with that because the the local public review draft is a 30-day public review. All community members can comment on it, all community members, commissioners, all community members. And the team, the Diet and Batia team and staff will need to respond to comments. And those comments and the responses will go to the town council for review and consideration before it goes to HCD. So that that that's a key key time in this process. And I believe, again, I wasn't here at that at this time. But I do believe that, you know, there were meetings earlier, you know, in terms of the safety element. Of course, I was here during some of the meetings on odds, for example, the objective design and development standards. So I think the the commission has had some opportunity in terms of various components of this project to to provide input already. But again, I'll emphasize for all community members, the 30-day public review of the local draft is a key time to review and provide comments. I think it's an important time.
Thank you. Four ago, Commissioner Kelly had his hand up. Did you still want? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Frigo.
Yes. I I I understand the constraints we're under with this housing element and and everything else that's going on. Frankly, I am a little disappointed that we had started out with some subcommittees appointed. It's been over a year, I guess now, to start looking at the policies of the prior housing element to look at the proposed sites that we've not really been able to digest and talk about very much. I know it's mostly gone to council these days. And I have to admit, I I'm not looking forward to 10 or 12 of those community meetings, nightmarish meetings that we had 10 years ago with the last housing element process that went on for years, but I, you know, I I do feel like it would have been nice to have more input and comment before everybody else in town. And but, you know, that's how council is doing things these days. They take, you know, a stronger hand at at things and trying to streamline the process, which we are so behind in. But so I I'm a little disappointed that we've not had more opportunity to comment prior to once it goes out as an administrative draft. Obviously, that would be our very last opportunity to be able to get a look at it. And so we'll just see how it goes. Will you be around, David? Should I should I even ask? I'm hoping you would be, but I understand there's constraints on on your schedule as well.
I I probably will not be around, to be to be perfectly honest. As as you all know, I'm a retired annuitant, and so I can work only a certain number of hours in a fiscal year. And it looks to me like in terms of the number of hours that I'll be able to work, I'll probably work through the month of February and work with the team to hopefully get the administrative draft completed and kind of set things up for the local public review draft going out on on that project. And the town manager is looking at bringing in essentially a replacement, somebody else to step in and and take my position. And of course, the town is is wanting to hire a permanent director. So I think there are two steps going on here. One, to to bring in someone that can provide contract planning assistance to the department, which I think is probably going to occur fairly soon. And then there's the ongoing effort to find a permanent, I'll say, a permanent director. And that's been somewhat challenging for so many communities, it seems, in terms of just filling these positions. It's been somewhat of a challenge, but I will be here through the through the month of February.
I was following the schedule. So something I think is amiss there. If the if we get the public comments back and you're gonna working on implementing that and sending it, and once that's done, sending it to HCD, we should not review it after that, but before that. Because otherwise, you're gonna have to send it twice, which comes back to the same concern. But I think that's the moment where the planning commission should take a look at it, because if we find something amiss, it can be implemented in that first submittal to HCD. And then the comments from the agency come back, and it can be formalized. If you interject the planning commission after that fact, then that's gonna be train wrecked.
Yeah, but I think what he's suggesting is we look at it during the public comment period and provide our own individual comments directly to staff during that 30-day review period.
Okay, that that is correct. That that is absolutely correct, that during that 30-day public review period is the time that I strongly encourage all of you to to look at the draft, provide your comments. The the comments will be, must be responded to and packaged, reviewed by council, and then sent on to HCD. And so that that's critical. That's a, you're right. You're you're both right. It's a critical point in the process.
This, it's okay, it's an individual basis of planning. I understand that. So the then a second question I have is because I understand we're trying to catch up here. So what happens between January 31st and June 31st, let's say? What what is the operating status?
So, for example, right now, I had mentioned that the needs assessment, the constraints analysis, the affirmatively furthering fair housing report, all of those have been worked on, drafts have been provided to staff. We've been reviewing those, subcommittee members have been reviewing those. Information from those reports, those will be appendices, appendices to the housing element. But information from those and other reports will actually go into the housing element itself, the local public review housing element itself. So that's the focus right now. But in addition, there will be a need, a requirement to do a full environmental impact report on the housing element. So as the site inventory is finalized, and it's in the process of being finalized, that's key in terms of identifying sites and then understanding and analyzing what the impacts, environmental impacts might be for those sites to develop housing. So after the local public review draft is is prepared and out, and we have a sense of the sites, the environmental document will go into kind of full gear in terms of its preparation. We've already had the notice of preparation scoping session. That was a few months ago. So that's kind of an announcement that a fully IR would be prepared on the project to receive comments from the public and agencies in terms of what environmental issues should be analyzed in the EIR or the housing element. So we've done that. We're finalizing the site inventory, working on the local public review draft. So then the next step, while, say, HCD is receiving and reviewing the draft, work will go full forward on preparing that environmental document. And then as comments come back from HCD, there may be a need, there likely will be a need to do some adjustments. And then kind of address any HCD comments. And then what we would hope to get is a letter basically from HCD indicating that your draft, our draft, with adjustments, is ready to certify, basically a ready to certify notification. With that, we bring together the draft and the environmental document and the other elements. There will be land use amendments, land use element amendments, the safety element, the entire package, along with the environmental document to the commission for review at notice public hearings and for a recommendation on to the town council for formal adoption and certification. Certification of the EIR initially and then adoption of the housing element and any associated elements, safety element, land use elements, because there will be a need to modify our land use plan. So all of that will be packaged together. So that that's the process that and I'm I'm being optimistic and you know, I'd like to be optimistic about this, but I'm hoping that we can be at a point in about June as a community that we can be in a position that we start that hearing process on the environmental document, on the housing element, and on the related amendments, safety and land use. That's optimistic, but that would be the objective.
So there the EIR and the submittal to HCD, the big and multiple others, they're basically all concurrent, and they need to come together at the same point in June.
Correct. Okay, that's the objective.
Yeah, that's understood. Yeah, it's quite a, yeah. That might work. Thank you.
Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, thanks. So since everybody's getting the public version at the same time, and we're not going to be submitting any planning commission comments, I I I wonder if the Brown Act would apply to our talking amongst ourselves during the public comment period before we submitted our personal comments.
So if I could, through the chair on that, we'll we'll talk to our town attorney about that in terms of providing commissioners guidance so as to make sure that you are compliant with the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner questions and requests, comments and requests? Does anyone have anything? Commissioner Newton?
Well, I just want to comment about Commissioner Green's stepping down from the planning commission and because I am sure he is staying up late and watching us tonight, I want to thank him for his many years of service to the town of Fairfax as a planning commission member and tell him how much I appreciate all he's given to our town in this role and, you know, that you know, just thanks, Phil.
I concur. Any other questions, comments? Nope. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I move that we close this meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.